I'd like to call to order the June 28, 2011, meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have roll call, please?
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Daigle are currently absent.
All right. We'll begin with clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Curry?
No items.
And Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
And Councilmember Hill?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Nothing.
I did have one, item number seven, having to do with the assessment district refunds. I noted with some surprise that there was a $1 million item in there of construction cost overrun, and I wonder how it is we could have missed our initial estimates or perhaps estimated high by that amount on that construction district.
I think I can probably answer that.
Thank you, Mayor. You got it, Steve?
Yeah. District 69 was essentially, to date, the largest district we ever had. It was a $10 million district, and the contingency was like, I think, 1.3 million. And I think we were relatively frugal with the money. We didn't have a lot of alleys to deal with because a lot of the street, a lot of them were actual street paving, so there weren't the difficulties that we normally run into. So I would guess it's a combination of just, we didn't run into anything because it's mostly beach sand, and we were able to save most of the contingency. And I think some of that money is actually interest earnings on the contingency. I don't know if Dan is here.
Yeah, I think about $200,000 is interest earnings, somewhere in that range. My concern is this, I know that wasn't intentional for this to happen, but the concern is that what happens is the original homeowners there either get tagged with the assessment or, most importantly, pay cash, you know, for their assessment.
I'm one of those homeowners.
I thought you were in that district.
[laughing].
But...
I'm waiting for my check.
But you'll be looking forward to getting your check back, but there'll be a number of homeowners that are there now that weren't there then that'll get just a little early Christmas present on this. And so I do have a concern about that and hoping that we're cutting it a little closer to the bone on our cost estimates here as we're moving forward with these things.
We've learned a lot over the years, and I think our more recent districts are really, really nailed down a lot tighter than they were back in those days.
And of course, we don't have the ITCC. ITCC, I said that right? To refund at this point, so that does help too, but that was just a particularly large overrun, so. Okay, thank you. Well, let's move on to business items. An update on the Fourth of July in West Newport. Our Fourth of July is for families event.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Captain Dale Johnson, and I've been designated by the Chief of Police as the Incident Commander for our July 4th deployment this year. This is my third year in that role and my 25th Fourth of July overall. Lieutenant Jep Brower has been designated as our Operations Commander, meaning that he will have command of the on-the-ground troops, so to speak, during the day, and I'm going to allow him to go over our operational plan with you in greater detail in a moment. I just wanted to remind the council that this Fourth of July deployment is part of a, kind of a strategic change in our deployment and in the way that we've looked at Fourth of July in past years. This will be the second year in which we've limited access to the impacted area to a greater degree. Our overall strategy has been to take back time and distance from that area. You'll notice as Lieutenant Brower discusses it that we moved our street closure from 38th Street to 40th Street this year. The previous year had been 32nd Street as part of, again, a standardized and reasoned approach as we move forward. We also hope to have the street closure closed at a much earlier time than it was last year, which had been closed earlier than it had been in previous years. I'll let him get into the details a little bit more. The council has provided us some additional tools, specifically the loud and unreasonable noise ordinance in order to allow us to effect a change, which had been our mission. And if there are no other questions, I mean, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Brower for further details. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Johnson. I'll get right into this PowerPoint presentation. Is this one, is this turned on? Obviously, it's the same problem that we have every year, excessively large crowds. And our whole goal of this year, and we had a pretty clear message from the City Council and from Chief Johnson, is exactly what Captain Johnson said. We want to try and get this to, kind of change the culture, and by doing the parade this year, Matt from Parks and Rec is going to talk about the parade a little bit later as we get into this, but we're, that's what our ultimate goal is, is to keep getting this smaller and smaller. This is the last year for the next three years after this that will be attached to a weekend, so we're hoping that that's going to make a difference. The weather's sounding like it's going to be a very hot weekend, so I don't know if that's going to be good for us this year, but we'll see how that ends up playing out. This is our last year. How many sites we had, parking citations, we rested 107 people. That was down a little bit from the year before. Some of that had to do with by blocking off Balboa at PCH like we did last year, which is the same thing that we're going to do this year. It spread the crowd out a little bit more. Instead of being in one condensed area, we had, it created a few more issues for us over on Seashore and then over off of Newport and 32nd, but nothing that we couldn't handle. It just kind of spread the crowd out a little bit more. So we're hoping that this year, by doing the same thing, this is when we're going to see what the difference was and what kind of impact that had, if that makes the crowd much smaller this year, or if it had any impact at all, we won't know until we get into it a little bit more this year. Like I talked about, family-friendly, having the parade this year at nine o'clock in the morning, we'll be closing off Balboa. I won't get into a bunch of that because Matt has some slides here at the end of this presentation that will discuss that. The municipal code sections, that was done back in 2003 when we made the Safety Enhancement Zone, which is basically from 32nd Street up to 54th Street, that whole area. All the citations, anything that we write there, municipal code, vehicle code, any type of citation has a triple fine attached to it. The enhanced safety procedures, that's kind of what we did last year by blocking off at Balboa and PCH. We've made some progress, but we're hoping that by adding some additional things in 2011 and keep continually making it smaller, that we're going to encourage further improvement and kind of change that whole attitude down there. This is the second year of our multi-year plan. We've been, we do this pretty much all the time anyways, but we're identifying the party houses, the trouble spots that we've been having. This past weekend was very busy. I anticipate that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are going to be very busy this year also, but that's also going to give us the opportunity to see what locations, because usually if they're there on Friday and Saturday, they're going to be there on the Fourth of July. So we should have a good idea of which houses are going to be issues, and hopefully if everything goes smoothly with the new ordinance, that will be our first opportunity to enact those citations or those stickers on those homes. Educating and inform, we've been doing a lot of that. Tara is a great resource for that, and she's been doing a bunch of mailers and flyers and along with our PIO, working at making sure everybody down there understands exactly what's going on. And you'll see all the different, I put in here a slide that shows all the different areas where we are doing the education with the citizens and with the people that are visiting. And gradually reopening streets. We're doing that again this year. We only went two more streets this year, just because we don't have any idea what the impact's going to be from last year at closing at Bell and the highway. If we, if it's my goal, and I know Captain Johnson and Chief Johnson, that's, our ultimate goal is to open that all up and not have to close down Balboa at all. If we can get rid of that Mardi Gras atmosphere, that's what we ultimately want to do. The message is clear that that's what everybody else that lives down there, what the City Council wants, the city manager, we understand that, and that's what all these things are leading us towards that direction to hopefully get to that point in the next two years to open all of that. The other new things, loud and unruly gathering ordinance, the family-friendly events, which includes the parade. We've changed our incident command system. The way that's working this year, that's different than in the past. Now we have lieutenants that are going to be designated to certain areas on the peninsula, and they're going to be the ones that will be ultimately responsible at the end of the day, that they'll have to answer to what went right, what didn't go right in their areas, and we're going to have, be able to have them have a little bit more interaction with some of the different homeowners groups there. I've met with the Lito Sands and the Villa Marina group in the last couple of weeks, gone to meetings with their entire, what I thought was just going to be a couple of board members, but obviously last year there was a couple of issues and it ended up being the whole community was there. I walked around the corner and I think there was like 100 people standing there, so. But they made it very clear what they liked and what they didn't like from last year, and we're working hand-in-hand with them, and they're very happy with the way we're handling it now, so. Our enforcement concept, that's the Safety Enhancement Zone. Nothing's changed there. It's going to stay the same as what it has been in the past, 32nd to 54th. Anything, any citation in that area is going to be a triple fine, just like we always have in the past. I've already talked about this, implementing the ICS, and where street closures, where they're going to take place at. A few things that we're going to do different with pedestrian and vehicle traffic and bicycle traffic. When we do close it off at 40th, last year, a lot of times we had a problem at 38th, they go around the barricade and get right back in the street. This year I had a sign made that's going to be placed at 40th Street that's going to make people understand, it'll say that Balboa is open to vehicular traffic from this point forward, pedestrians in the roadway will be subject to citation. We're going to take a much heavier enforcement action than we have in the past. Not that we haven't in the past, but we have to make it very clear. In that area right there was a huge problem, and out on Balboa and PCH with cabs pulling up and stopping in the middle of the street and dumping, and dropping people off, cars pulling up on the sidewalk so people could jump over fences. We're going to have quite a few more officers that are going to be actually posted on PCH in both directions to control the people so they can't get over the fence into those communities and to take care of those issues where they're stopped on dropping off people out in the middle of the Pacific Coast Highway. Hopefully, 6:00 PM, if all goes well, if we're going good at four o'clock, I'll open it at four o'clock on Fourth of July. It's all going to be depending on how many people we have and what, and I'm going to rely on the incident command system and the lieutenants that are out in the field. They'll be reporting back to me and letting me know, are we able to open it up earlier? We might have to go until seven o'clock. Last year we wanted to go at six, and I think it ended up, I wasn't out in the field, I was in the office, but eight, nine o'clock, I think, is by the time we got it open, just based on the large crowd that we had. We talked about that. This is basically how it's going to be set up again, the exact same way as it was last year. That's the triangle lot. The Jack in the Box will be on the corner up there, and then Circle K and the businesses inside the triangle lot. We'll have the street closed at 12:00, so there will be no pedestrian, our vehicle, our bicycle traffic coming in off of Pacific Coast Highway onto Balboa Boulevard.
Before you change that one?
I'm sorry.
Last year I was over there, and as you're going westbound on Coast Highway, there's a turn pocket that goes into that shopping center.
Yes.
Before you get to the light, is that going to be open? Because it was closed last year, and it didn't make sense to me why it would be closed. It seemed to push the traffic, whoever wanted to get into the center, down to the light when they didn't need to go to the light.
West of Balboa Boulevard? Or?
East of Balboa Boulevard.
East of Balboa, okay.
There's a turn pocket there.
Right, to turn in by the Jack in the Box?
Yes.
No, it's more down by the alley.
Down by the alley, okay.
Yeah, that turn lane was closed, it was blocked off.
Oh, okay.
Is it possible to have that open? I don't know why you'd need it closed.
Yeah, there's really no reason to have that closed.
All right, can we make sure that that's open this year? Because it pushed those people down to Coast Highway and Superior.
Right.
And they'd have to do a U-turn there. I don't even, I don't even know if they could do a U-turn there at that point, but, so we really need to have that open for the shopping center.
That shouldn't be, that shouldn't be an issue whatsoever. I'll talk with our traffic commander, who's going to be out there handling the traffic portion of it, of a discussion with him this afternoon when I get back in.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And this is just a Google map view of exactly, that's where the fencing will be, where you see the red lines.
Yeah, you can see the turn pocket there in that picture, in the middle of the right-hand side there.
Yes.
See the turn pocket? That was closed last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is just the detour map, basically showing that the people will have to go out by Balboa and which directions they can go. We'll have, Orange Avenue will be closed also, and there'll be a sign there that will tell people they have to go to Prospect if they're coming eastbound on the highway or southbound, whichever way you would want to look at it. They'll have to go to Prospect, turn, and come back in to get over to Orange. That was basically from the members of the community that live down there. That was a huge traffic issue, people turning, and then they had nowhere to go. They didn't know that it was a one-way street, so that's why we're going to do that again this year. These are party enforcement with the DAC and Lugo enacted. We're in the process of getting teams trained this year, and there'll be dedicated teams that will be, that's all they're going to do is handle any of our Lugo situations. We're very early into this, and trying to get everybody trained up in time for Fourth of July will be almost impossible, but we will have dedicated party teams that they're going to be out there, and they'll be with supervisor and officers that will handle any of our Lugo citations. We talked about that, the pedestrian bicycle violations, that's mainly in the area from 32nd to 40th Street were our issues there. Times that we're going to be starting, day watch patrol, night watch patrol, we'll eliminate the night, the mid-watch patrol on this day, just so we can have more officers on day and night watch, and then those are the starting times that will start during the Fourth of July. We'll have a briefing in this room at each one of those times for, that's between, including Newport and outside agency personnel that all meet here, and we give them their assignments. Same thing as last year. Sometimes this changes at the last second. I can't say enough, Doug Jones, Sergeant Jones, is the one that's in charge of putting together all of the outside agencies. It's a monotonous task, and it changes at the last second. Last year, I think, the day before, somebody called and said, oh, sorry, we can't make it, and that really affects us, but we're hoping that that doesn't happen again this year. But Sergeant Jones is invaluable in putting together all this personnel. Same enforcement, alcohol is obviously our biggest issue. We haven't had huge, like a riotous situation. We do get the unruly conduct, you know, that's where the whole Mardi Gras atmosphere comes in, and we're going to put a heavy hand on trying to quell that as much as we can. This is the community outreach that we've done, between contacting business owners, sending out mailers, community meetings, flyers. I've been going and talking to the homeowners associations that have had issues and that were concerned, and trying to alleviate any of their concerns and not make as perfect a promise, but as much of a promise as they can that it won't happen again this year. Ongoing sites to known party houses, outreach to owners and tenants, the short-term lodging permit holders. We spend a lot of time putting information out on the Facebook, on city and PD websites. The Twitter and Instagram have, are starting to really catch on, and we're getting a lot of feedback from that. That's been really good. The electronic signage, you've seen some of them are already starting to get put up. Most of it won't get implemented and put out on the street until probably Friday and Saturday of the weekend. This is the website where you can go, you can look at any of our traffic control and parking information. Some of the lots, like the Superior Lot, Superior and the Highway, that'll be closed starting the night before, but all that information is on the website, and that's where we've been sending everybody that calls and has questions for the PD. These are just some staff contacts. There'll be another slide in just a minute, they'll have that same one if anybody needs my information or Tara's or Kathy Lowe's. And I'll turn it over to Matt now, and he'll talk a little bit more about the Fourth of July Parade.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hinn and City Council. It's our great pleasure to introduce our new event, Fourth of July is for Families, and we've been working very closely with Tara Finnegan and with Lieutenant Brower to get this organized. And this came out of last year's wrap-up with the Fourth of July meeting with the community is to try to bring a family festival event to the community. So since January, we've been working with about six to seven community members that live in on the peninsula, West Newport, communities to organize a family event, and so the community definitely had lots of input on how this event was going to take shape. And to just give you a little information, again, Monday, July 4th, the parade will start at 9:00 AM at 38th Street Park, and will end at Channel Place Park, and we have a family festival event from 9:30 to 11:30, free to the public. Our volunteers raised over $3100 in sponsorship to help offset the cost, which was great. We didn't expect to bring that much. And I'm going to go over just a few things of publicity and the parade route, and again, Lieutenant Brower has been just fabulous on helping secure the streets and PD assisting us that we can deal with the parade and the event. They're securing the streets that day, especially going down Balboa Boulevard, which the community had requested. So right here, we have 38th Street, where will be the gathering place for the park. There's one and a half basketball courts and a grass area. We're planning to have the street closed about 8:30 AM that morning, so northwest side of Balboa Boulevard will be closed from 32nd Street. People can still use Newport Boulevard to get out, and they can also enter the peninsula on the southwest side of Balboa Boulevard. So we're going to be shut down right here, parade gathering. We have the police, antique police car, and also the fire truck with the community decorating floats and different types of things. To go down Balboa Boulevard, it starts at 9:00 AM, and will end up over at 38th Street Park. Again, PD is securing all the parade route, just due to the high nature of the volume of cars and everything. And then we'll end up at 38th Street Park, where we'll have a family fun event.
Channel Place.
Oh, sorry, Channel Place Park, and we'll have a family fun event with bouncer, games, activities, face painter, and free food donated by the community. Just to give you a little more information, again, our, the HOA's neighborhood associations have been great, going back and feedback from their residents, but also they've been good about sending out flyers. We've sent over 12,000 flyers to communities, a lot of that being no cost to the city other than printing. We also have had some ads because of the sponsorship and some donations from the neighborhood and community associations stepping up, again, over $3100. At this time, do you have any questions about the event?
Yes. Is it an all-day event at the park or is it half-day? What are the hours? I know the parade starts at nine, but...
Flip back. It starts at 8:30, is the lineup for the parade. 9:00 AM the parade, we'll go down Bal Boulevard, and the event's from 9:30 to 11:30. And we really worked with the community that this is the first-year trial run, and it can grow or expand. They felt comfortable with this, and those were their suggested times and locations.
At what, the Mariners Park event on the Fourth of July, does that generally go all day in the afternoon?
They will start their parade at 10:30 in the morning, and their event goes till 3:00, so.
Okay.
And we've been working closely with them that they don't feel it competes, it actually is more for the community to do.
Sure. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And like I said, these are just the overview of the things that we've been talking about already, and our information, it's mine, Kathy Lowe, who'll be doing the PIO duties, and then Tara Finnegan from the city manager's office. And if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Questions from council? Okay, I did have a question or two.
Yes, sir.
With regard to the outreach, were we able to actually outreach to the UCI campus and some of the other campuses around the area? If anybody can answer that, I don't...
I don't know. Did your office do anything with? Steve Burdette was, he was the one that was handling the mailers and that information, and I have to ask Steve, I don't, I can't speak for sure if he talked to UCI, but I know that that was a subject that we did talk about early in the process, about the local colleges that we do have that, have the sorority house and houses that are down here, the short-term rentals.
Yeah, all right. Well, I'd like somebody to verify that, and if it didn't happen quite as well as you might have wanted, you know, that'll be a learning for next year, that we can really push hard against that issue. I guess I'd have to say in closing, I, you know, this, this whole thing about, this idea about changing the culture in West Newport terminated a couple of years ago in a series of conversations with, between me and Dave Kiff, you know, trying to think about, can we really do this? And I appreciate Dave latching on to this and with enthusiasm, and then I especially appreciate the police department's very, very constructive response, working with us on this. And then this year with the addition of Parks and Recreation, so that we've now got not just a negative approach here to crack down on the problem, but also a positive approach to try and grow a positive feeling for Fourth of July in West Newport. And, you know, it remains to be seen if this whole effort will work or not, but I just couldn't be more thrilled with the support that staff has given this over the past two or three years, and I really, really mean that, and I, and I so appreciate that on behalf of the residents of the area. I truly regret that because of a family priority, I'm going to be out of town on the Fourth of July. I would, I would most certainly have been there this year had I had the opportunity to do that, and I'll, but I'll look forward to the feedback on how things went.
We're going to live text you with photos, so you know exactly what's going on.
Hey, do it. I'll be, I'll be on the lookout, really, I will, and I'll be with you in spirit, there's no question to that, and the residents of West Newport. With that, I'd like to invite any public comment on this item.
Mayor Hinn and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I didn't expect to speak, and I do applaud the council and staff for expanding the number of family-friendly Fourth of July events in our city. One very longstanding one has been the fireworks display at the Newport Dunes, and I, while they were talking, I was reviewing this brochure that is passed out in the lobby, and I was surprised to see on the back, it says that there is a $50 per car parking fee and a $10 fee for walk-ins. That didn't sound quite right to me, so I went to the city clerk's office while they were speaking and looked at the council's policy B-12 about the cosponsorship of the annual fireworks event, and it says here as a, the number one condition of our cosponsorship of the event is that city residents shall have free access to the event with the exception of a parking fee. And so you might want to clarify how a $50 parking fee and $10 walk-in fee is consistent with our policy. Thank you.
Would anyone care to respond to that question now, or can we, shall we respond to that after you've had a chance to look at it? We'll take a look at it, true. Okay. All right. Any other comments on the West Newport Fourth of July is for Families?
One other comment regarding your question about the outreach to UCI. Joe Reese, who is a peninsula resident, is now a lieutenant for UCI Police Department, and Mr. Rowan from the city attorney's office has advised me that he was very aggressive in his outreach at the UCI area concerning Fourth of July. So that's, that's a nice resource to have over there.
Joe didn't get enough policing in Anaheim?
Apparently not.
I guess not.
Apparently not.
Okay, well, that's good. Any further council comment on this? Okay, thank you. Thank you again. Chief, thank you. All right, next item, options for legal services and the structure there for with the city.
I'm actually rather proud that I was able to open that PowerPoint and get it up so flawlessly. I've never done that on this machine. Good evening. The council asked last meeting to have a presentation regarding different options available to the city for obtaining services for legal services throughout the city. So we're presenting a written staff report, and I'm trying to summarize it briefly here with a PowerPoint for your consideration. Basically, to start where we are, right now you have a paradigm, which I will call sort of a modified in-house type of paradigm that we proceeded from. We began in 2008, '09 with one city attorney, two assistants, but one of those positions was not filled. 1.7 deputies and 0.7 paralegal for a total of 5.4 legal professionals. Now we're currently at one city attorney, two assistant city attorneys, 2.7 deputy city attorneys, and one paralegal. That's not only this time, but it's what's recommended in your coming budget. We're basically structured in a way that divides up the different departments. The city attorneys at the top overseeing all the legal services provided, including contract counsel. The two assistant city attorneys deal with specific departments, which are their assignment, and they're supported by deputy city attorneys as assigned. Mr. Rowan supports ECA Beecham. Mr. Torres directly supports Ms. Mulva-Hill, and Kathy Walcott's kind of a utility infilter doing a lot of support for me. Mr. Rowan is somewhat distracted from his support for Ms. Beecham because he supports me with respect to litigation. He's proven to be a great asset for me as I'm taken into different areas because he brings great litigation skills to that position. Right now what's happening is, is that, this was from your staff report back in January, we have an approximate division of services between advisory, enforcement, representation, and administration of the office, so 7.4, 74 to 75 percent being advisory work. That's our day-to-day work for departments, to the city council, dealing with all the issues that exist in the city. About 13.4 percent... About 13.4 percent is in enforcement, that's supporting the enforcement division and also handling different enforcement issues on the litigation side in part. 6 percent is representation. What I mean by that is, is representing you in specific court proceedings. We've not expanded that very much and that was planned to be done in this coming budget. Six, approximately 6 percent is administration, overseeing outside counsel, administering the office. Most of that is done by me in my function as the city attorney. Now you have multiple paradigms that are available for you to receive attorney services or legal services within the city. They really exist on a, on a continuum that goes from what I, oops, excuse me, which, I'm sorry, this isn't as easy to read as I had hoped. It goes from pure contracting out, which is essentially an on-demand model, purely, you know, pure contract out, you can retain a law firm to provide all legal services necessary to accommodate the needs of the city. Or you can go all the way in-house and those are the two sides of the paradigm. In my report, I've identified that I don't believe the city of Newport Beach has sufficient need for legal services to fully provide all of its needs in-house. That required specialization and gearing up for things that you wouldn't have the ongoing need for, so you'd have excess staff. That's not, in my opinion, a functional alternative for you. The rest of these options are completely functional for you. They just result in different choices that occur along the way. Presently, what, what we are working toward based upon the approved mission and goal statement of the City Attorney's Office is the modified integrated model where we try to integrate the functions of the City Attorney's Office and the legal function with your basic policy and staff functions. So we do this work before it comes to you essentially. But you have multiple other options available to you which we can discuss further. If you go to an option where there's further contracting out, and what we're doing here is, is what we proposed in the next budget, is to maintain existing staffing but bring in-house specialty litigation, those things that were qualified to perform for the city and thus reducing our costs of outside counsel. That's what this paradigm is shooting for in the budget. If you go to a more outside contracting setup, there are multiple options for actually signing out that are effective just to sign out. You can assign out all litigation, which includes code enforcement. We brought all code enforcement back in-house two years ago. All specialty litigation, for the most part specialty litigation has been done outside of the office of the city attorney. We're proposing to bring that back inside in next year's budget. And all tort litigation. Now tort litigation is under our insurers program and that is essentially done at this time outside by outside contractors, but overseen by your risk management, human resources, and the office of the city attorney. Then you can take code enforcement function, which is here, which is on the advisory side. A good deal of our time is spent in advising actual code enforcement, the building or the code enforcement division and citations, the administrative side and representing to appeals for administrative citations, et cetera. That can all be assigned out as well to one particular or multiple code enforcement law firms. Another, what area that can be broken off fairly easily is personnel and human resources. There are some highly qualified firms that can assist in human, human resources and personnel. It is a fairly specialized area of the law. You can get all types of and cover all the human resources background by, by contracting out that particular function. At present, we do a good deal of that by assisting human resources, but also rely on outside resources such as Lever Cassidy and Whitmore. There are also special projects that come up every year that none of us foresee that you can contract out on a special project basis, such as, and these are examples over the last year. We did a lot of work on the Sunset Ridge Park NOV. Ms. Mulva Hill and Mr. Torres worked with our consultants in the Coastal Commission and the Banning Ranch people and I think achieved a good resolution of that issue. But that can be, that type of thing can be handed out. All development agreements. Presently, we, we've outside counseled for the Banning Ranch Development Agreement, but there are other small development agreements we've handled in-house. Ms. Mulva Hill has been doing that and has that expertise. All secret documents. It's currently my recommendation that on city projects, the office of the city attorney review your secret documents in order to avoid problems with potential litigation. For example, the Banning Ranch Conservancy challenged our secret document for Sunset Ridge. We had reviewed that and given our advice in that, in assisting planning and coming up with the document that we were able to defend in court. All of that can be handed out. We have an outside contracting attorney that assists us on secret based upon workload needs and the Manley Law Firm. Group homes matters. This is a fairly insular area. It's an unusual area of the law. We have it partially contracted out to Richards Watson and Gershon, who's handling litigation. Over time, we brought much of this back in-house, like the administrative proceedings and the code enforcement aspects of it. This entire function could be, could be basically outsourced. You have a number of special harbor issues and needs that have come up over the last year. Mooring fees, commercial peers. You're, you're going to be facing Coastal Commission issues and harbor projects. This is, this is an area of the law that while we have the expertise in-house and that's been performed by Ms. Mulva Hill and Mr. Torres and myself, there are good law firms who can do this kind of work. We had the assistance of a law firm, John Briscoe and his law firm, in dealing with the mooring fees, for example. The JWA settlement agreement is also a major project or a project that's before the city right now. That's something that's insular that can be handed off as well. Currently, that's being handled in our office along with other support. Of course, Tom Edwards, your consultant, and Dave Kiff, the city managers, leading up and heading that charge along with three members of the council. Our office also provides support along with some assistance from the Manley Firm on secret documents. Now, those middle two functions or three functions that we talked about, certainly if you went completely outsourcing, you'd have 100% savings. So that would be 1.5 million approximately, and I'm sorry that this isn't legible, it's in the written staff report. You'd save about 1.5 million if you went to a completely outsourced office of the city attorney. If you went to a more balanced approach in what I've called basically modified outsourcing, and I don't have the right kind of glasses to read that, I think it's 650, 555,000. Thank you very much. And then that would be approximately a three attorney office. We are recommending the use of, I would recommend the use of paralegals, a paralegal because what you want to do is put the attorney's work or the legal work into the highest, into the lowest paid qualified person to do it. And paralegals can be an excellent resource for that. Our paralegal helps us very well. Kristi Aspling does a great job, for example, on contracts and other support functions. If you cut down the office further, down to, just down to four attorneys, there's a $357,000 savings with respect to overall compensation costs. Now, when you talk about contracting out, there is an offsetting issue that occurs that the council needs to take into consideration. Our weighted, and this is, these are our, this was calculated originally for me by Administrative Services and we added in an overhead cost as well. So this is complete compensation, total compensation cost plus overhead. Our average rate's about $109 an hour. Mine's 144. And then for our assistant city attorneys, you can see what those numbers are. Outside counsel for advisory actually comes up with about 289 average rate, which is obviously more. And outside counsel for litigation comes up with about a 261 rate. Now, these rates obviously are very different. There are issues with respect to that. To some extent, we're comparing apples to oranges. Obviously, with an in-house office, you've got a fully functional office, so there's a question of how much of the 40 hours a week are actually completely productive hours and one can certainly debate that. I can tell the council though that uniformly, the attorneys that have been hired into this office work 45-hour weeks. In fact, I told them, don't come here because you want to work in the government at 40 hours a week. I expect you to work 45 hours a week or more. And so they put in an average between 45 and 50 hours a week. But that doesn't mean every hour is productive as well because there are other issues going on. Outside counsel bill you only produce presumably for productive hours. However, that's not exactly how it always works. And so you need to keep that in mind when you start talking about the outside counsel option. All right. Well, that brings us back to paradigm options. And you've got essentially what I've outlined and this is, I mean, there's in-betweens as well, but I've tried to give you milestones or areas to look at. And this is contracting out completely. This is a modified contracting out where you basically stay with what I will call core services in-house, well, I'm sorry, oversight in services in-house only. When you, when you contract out, it's been my experience, particularly with this city, that it's important to not only oversee outside counsel, but drive outside counsel. I could use the group home situation as being a very good example of that. While we have extremely capable counsel, they're not as connected to the needs of the city as your in-house team is. And so it's important to be in charge of those important policy issues that are going on for the city. So you do always need a core component for oversight of outside counsel. Then there's a core services type of component that can get added on that's in this area. And the core services really relate to your Brown Act, General Laws issues, Political Reform Act, Public Records Act, all the needs for day-to-day functioning of the city, attending your different meetings, particularly this meeting, the city council's meeting, you could conceivably contract out all planning, including seeing, sitting at the planning commission level to a different law firm. And then there's the modified, modified integrated that I've proposed and I don't recommend this. So in sum, all of this is available to you as, as an option. I have recommended the modified integrated situation and that's what we proposed in the budget. I continue to recommend that, but any, any choice you make along these lines is a valid choice and a viable choice for providing legal services to the city. And I look forward to your, your direction here today so we can achieve what you wish to accomplish.
Okay. Questions for David? Councilmember Hill?
I do. I mean, as I look at this whole topic, I look at it as a, as a financial decision in part. And, and so when I see in, for example, the three attorney model, it says we'd save 565, 566,000. The immediate question that I have is if we were to go to that model and compare it with how we've operated, let's say this, last year, we would therefore have shoved a great deal of additional services outside. Do we have any kind of a flavor or feel for how many hours that staff spent that would be outside in that model? Because my tendency as to where I would go with that is I would say, well, had we been on this model, we would have, we would have not expended in-house 800 hours, 600 hours, whatever the number is. And then I would multiply that times the average billing rate to see if, if this, you know, looks like a great thing to do, but all of a sudden, you know, while I've saved 600, 565,000, I've increased my outside billing by 750,000. How does that equation work? I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, I regret to say, I regret to say I can't give you actual hours that are specifically put in by the attorneys of our office related to any particular issue. In part, I went through the list of things that can be handed off and gave you examples of what was done in-house to give you an idea of the amount of stuff that would have to be sent out. So a number of the things that would not be able to be handled by a three attorney office that would have to go out, like that list I handed, I identified to you. It's a major component, that's a major component of our work. The core work of doing the day-to-day is not the largest major component, but I can't give you specific hours. But you can manage outside counsel as well. And so really the question becomes what do you wish and where's the value added? What do you feel as counsel is the value added from the legal services that you receive? And, you know, I can't tell you directly that the, it will cost you more to go outside counsel. I can tell you that's a possibility. Frankly, I suspect that's a probability eventually. But that's really a question of how you want to manage the legal services that you receive. And so you identify what you think is important for us to do. I mean, obviously, you need to have attorneys that are dealing with your council meetings and dealing with your contracts appropriately and dealing with your ordinances as necessary because it's required by the charter. That function of what we do is a significant portion and the representation and advisory is about 75% of what we do. But I would suggest that's probably closer down to about third or 40% of what we do. And then what we're talking about is another 35% on top of it is those extra projects. For example, Ms. Mulva Hill flew up to the State Lands Commission meeting last week in order to address the State Lands Commission on Marina Park. Outside counsel would have done that at whatever, $300 an hour plus, or been in San Francisco and made it cheaper because we used John Briscoe, that's where he's from, but he's at $485 an hour. So there are those kinds of trade-offs. Did the assistant city attorney have to go? No. It could have been just the city engineer that went. So where's the value that you see and would, if you reduce the role of the office of the city attorney, then you get your savings. That's, that could create monetary savings.
I guess, you know, having 30 years of experience of managing service business, I would look at it, the fact that, go back to your quote-unquote billable hours. And so if, if we're reducing staff under this model, then we've reduced X number of hours. What percentage of those hours are billable? And, and then that amount of time multiplied times the rate we would experience on the outside would give me the balance number as to whether I was making a financially good decision or a financially bad decision.
I'm sorry, councilmember, I can't give you those specific numbers. I haven't prepared those. I could, I could appropriately approximate numbers and go through and look at things over time. But it would only be an approximation and I would have to work with my attorneys to determine how to spread that out. And again, I think really what it is, is not, I think it's really a question of what services you want from the office of the city attorney or the legal services, because there are certainly things that we do that you may or may not want, that you wouldn't send outside counsel. You may not send outside counsel the EIRs for the city's projects. I think frankly that we caught some things in those EIRs that would have been prudent detrimental to the city and the projects. I do think sending them out makes sense. Ultimately guiding us as to what you want us to do and giving us that model. What we've been pursuing is the mission statement that we provided to you in January and that's to fully integrate. To be sure, we're not always completely efficient in doing so and I take responsibility for that. But if you want the integration, then it'll either have to come through outside counsel or come through an internal setup.
Okay. I, I had a question. Well, to follow on to Councilmember Hill's question, you know, if you take that $565,000 savings, it works out to roughly 2,000 hours of work, you know, if you were to have it contracted out. And so the, the gamble here, if you want to phrase it that way, is that when we go outside, we always think twice before we do that. Do I want to incur this, what's always viewed as an incremental expense? And will I just get targeted work on exactly what I asked for and therefore reduce the chance of, in effect, scope creep, if you will? You know, when you've got inside resource and, you know, I've seen, I've seen it in all directions here. It's, these problems are solvable no matter what, but it does cause you to think twice when you know you're going to be writing an additional check for a service.
Absolutely. And I wish I could give you specific numbers, but what I've tried to highlight is kind of the difference and I've talked about what that says is on-demand model. So you can manage your attorneys, your use of attorney services more, perhaps more easily and avoid, you know, scope creep, you know, mission creep. To be sure, there are times when we, we in our office might find ourselves responding to staff in a service-oriented approach because that's frankly what I teach and what we pursue, is to try and solve problems rather than deal with them afterwards. And we may get too deep into things that would otherwise be stuff that are appropriate for staff and you wouldn't want an outside attorney to do that.
And sometimes you get more deeply in because other staff ask you to become more involved, maybe in things they ought to be doing and, but...
To be sure.
Ask you to do, you know, so...
That, that can certainly happen.
But, you know, so the natural result of that question is, well, let's just go to the fully contracted model, which is pure on-demand, right?
Yes.
But, but the problem with that is it doesn't allow for the kind of continuity, in-touch with the community, I think really dedication that you need out of the city attorney's office. I know other cities do it and they seem to be able to do it okay. But I just feel much more comfortable having that, that higher level of calling, if you will, that comes with an inside function. So the question becomes if we stay inside, then are we still able to get the core function that we need? In other words, what's the risk in the three attorney model or the four attorney model that because there's more of an on-demand component, we don't quite get the integration and the prophylactic, you know, benefit of that inside integration on a day-to-day basis?
I think if you go with one of the more balanced models, the three or four attorney model, the question becomes, you know, when does the office get involved and what's the triggering point of the office? Our goal has been to be, to have trigger points to come, like with staff reports. Obviously, we're involved in contracts and ordinances so that we're assisting at the basic level. I think with respect to a smaller office, it would be difficult to do all of that. But I think what we're talking about is, is that if we go to a greater contracting model, we'd be giving off the insular projects. And so the goal, I think if the council were to make this choice in the balanced model is to keep the core services there. I think it needs to, and ultimately work with management about what it feels the core services are most important. But I do think there is a risk that certain things will be missed. And, and certainly our office misses things now, to be sure. There have been things missed in the past. There have been things missed in the past that have bitten the city and we've dealt with over the course of these last two years. I certainly can't say that won't happen, but it could happen for our office as well. So I would be cautious. My thought is, is if you go to a higher contracted out model, you're looking at three or four attorneys, depending on how you structure that model.
But you're not saying that that raises the risk profile of the city to some sort of an unacceptable level to do that?
No, I'm not saying that. I think that becomes a cultural issue to make sure that your office of the city attorney is still involved with those primary-level issues that we, such as the ones we've had to address in the last two years.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Well, if there is more contracting out, then also there's more administration?
Definitely there's administration.
And would that take away from focus on the core issues because you're managing outside counsel? I look at this, and I, for me personally, I don't like the idea of the fully contracted out. I like having our city attorney, I think it's important. But there is an interesting spectrum. But obviously, there's give and take with each one, which makes it something to weigh, like what Councilman Hill was saying.
When you
What are the real dollars?
And it is a trade-off with respect to management, and I agree with you. My recommendation to you would be is that you'd have active management internally from your office of the city attorney. Some of that can be pushed down to different places for reviewing bills, et cetera, and maybe potentially to someone who's qualified to review bills. But what you learn from bills, surprisingly, is what exactly was done. And you start seeing things, because we require that attorneys itemize what they do. So it's actually, while it's a function that seems to be administrative, which it is in part, to be sure they comply with our billing guidelines, it also tells us where they're going. And it's like getting a status report, and we can sculpt their next actions going through that. So it's an important aspect of having our attorneys who are overseeing the lawyers actually reviewing.
The other aspect is something that you touched on, which is almost like being on a diet, that when we have a fully-staffed, a fully-integrated, or almost fully-integrated attorney's office, we tend to pig out. We tend to be very lavish in our requests for information, and any little thing that comes into our mind, we send it off to the city attorney's office, where if, as you say, we were thinking of that check, we might have a governor and eat a little bit less in terms of really evaluate our requests. That might be a benefit.
And that's an appropriate benefit from a contract and partially-contracted model. And typically, well, in a fully-contracted model, typically, what happens is the city manager is your primary representative. I know that because I've seen other contracts, but also I was a contract city attorney in Morro Bay and Pismo Beach. And what happens in that basis is then your city manager becomes the gatekeeper. Someone else will be a gatekeeper if you keep a partial, if you keep a partial internal house before it goes out to outside counsel, and you can manage then the actual time that's spent.
Okay, any other comments from council? All right, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anyone care to make a comment here? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to council. I think it's important, since we raised this issue, that we provide guidance to the city attorney on what direction council would like to go. And David, I think you've done a very good job here of identifying enough variation of opportunities here, but not too much. And so I think we need to land on, my view anyway, is that we can land on one of these identified alternatives here by way of a consensus and then ask for the city attorney to articulate that much more carefully. And I presume that articulation would have to be coming back with specifics about then what you would think would need to be if we elected to go for a more of an outsourced model, specifics of what you would recommend then. And I guess a budget estimate of outside attorney cost, you know, the support of whatever it is you would recommend.
And I could certainly do my best with respect to that. But as you've seen over the course, at least of my last two years here, it's difficult because you're dealing with some pretty unusual variables, for example, in litigations, et cetera. And while I've litigated for almost 30 years, it's very hard to be able to say exactly what that. But I think the advisory work I've tried very hard to do, but I have seen that there's a preference in some areas for the council to go to outside counsel. We've used outside attorneys in different areas that I didn't originally anticipate. We've used outside counsel for some, a development agreement I didn't originally anticipate. We used one in Tidelands that I didn't originally anticipate. We've used one as an advisor to the Civil Service Board, which wasn't financial, excuse me, wasn't legally necessary, but made some sense that I didn't originally anticipate. So there are some needs that I think that the city has and the council sees as a benefit for outside counsel. And we can try and cost those kinds of things out a little bit better when I didn't foresee them before.
Okay. Well, with that, I'd like to get some sense of individual council members, where we think. Councilmember Daigle?
Yeah, I'd be inclined to support that sort of three to four attorney in-house option. But I'd also like to see with our, with the management of the outside counsel, some kind of discussion on how that's being done. You know, we have in the city something like 25 commercial trash haulers. And I've often thought if we were to get that down to four, it'd be better managed because we'd have more monitoring and it'd just be less entities to manage. And I sometimes wonder, I don't have the facts to support it, that we have a lot of individual law firms. We seem to have a bevy of law firms that we're doing business with. And is there a way that we can achieve efficiencies by limiting the number of firms? Now, I know that we have specialized needs, aviation, Tidelands, and one firm can't do it all. I can appreciate that. But I do wonder if what negotiating of rates and discounting can be done with outside firms so that we can manage that more in a different way. So that would be my comment. So I kind of look at really a sort of a two-pronged approach, less inside and then more, let's look at how we're managing the outside to achieve efficiencies.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
Well, just to comment on a couple of the things that Councilmember Daigle said. First of all, we have commercial trash haulers who provide choice to Newport Beach businesses for how they haul their refuse. I always believe competition is good, and so I can't think of, that creates, by the way, a lot of administrative burden, the fact that we grant them a franchise once when they come to the city council. So I don't think there's any oversight with that. And I would not be in favor of restricting the options of our businesses for commercial trash hauling opportunities. Competition, I think, is good. As it relates to legal services, I also think that is true with law firms. Law firms can be very specialized, and some of the issues that we deal with are very specialized. And so I think we ought to be able to pick from, when we are contracting out services, from the very best and the most specific of those who provide the expertise that we need. You know, we can talk about skimping on legal services, but as long as we are the subject of the shakedown lawsuits, which get widely reported in the paper, we need to defend those with vigor, and we need to be very clear to the public that we're going to continue to do that. That saves tax dollars, doesn't cost tax dollars. Now, I happen to believe that there is a model, a balanced model, that uses perhaps more enhanced contracted services along with some enhanced capability, and I'd like to see a sort of move to that model. But I want to be very clear that we should do so in a way that makes it clear that we're going to fully meet our obligations to provide the best legal counsel, to the city council, to the city departments, and vigorously defend the taxpayers from the things we have to defend them from.
Okay. Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes, thank you. I also would support the balanced-on-demand model. I think, I know last several years, we've moved towards a more robust city attorney's office, but, you know, I've spent a number of years up on the dais here with a less robust city attorney's office with more outside help, and it seemed to work okay. And it just seems that we need to focus more on the bottom line, on what we're paying for legal services. You know, I support Leslie's idea of at least trying to negotiate better rates, certainly with the firms that we do deal with. However, you know, you do want to go to the firm that you think you're going to get the best service out of. And some of the stuff is fairly generic-type litigation that a number of firms do well. But some of it is very specialized, and we want to make sure that we get the very best legal representation. So that being said, I guess if I had to pick one of these four categories, I would go with the balanced-on-demand and integrated model.
Okay, anyone else care to posit a view on this? Councilmember Hill?
Well, I would come back to, I mean, I've gone through this exercise many times in outsourcing, engineering, and these different types of things in the architectural practice. And it's not an easy decision. I mean, you've done a remarkable job of summarizing the opportunities, I think, and you're absolutely right. I mean, to predict what would happen in the future is near impossible. I would have a tendency to take a look at history. I mean, I'd go back and look at two years and say, you know, had we been under this model for the last two years, this is what the economics would be, and try to make a finite judgment based upon that. My inclination would be to go probably to, I mean, as I look at the numbers, and I understand the position on you have to decide what you really want, you know, it's not just purely an economic decision. But if I were to look at it as just an economic decision, I mean, I would try to make the three-model work, because I think that's the best opportunity. And that's the one I would test with history, is to, you know, if we'd had the three-model last year, what would it have looked like in our cost and our expense? And see how that works out. I mean, when I run some real rough numbers, if we work off of the averages, it looks like, you know, you're affording about a full-time outsourced attorney fee, one position equivalent outsourced. And, you know, and is that enough to cover what we were doing? I don't know. And I think that's the approach to take a look at.
All right, Councilmember Daigle?
Well, I would just clarify, the parallel to commercial trash is that it's simply common sense that the span of control over four firms is much easier than over 25 firms. And in fact, if you ask our staff, there are issues with the management when you have that number of firms. So it's not a sort of a free enterprise perspective on this. It's simply, how do you establish a better span of control? And clearly, with less, it's easier to do than with a lot of firms.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that, I think that's an absolutely correct approach to making sure we have an appropriate span of control. I would point out that in the context of legal services, to perhaps give you a short statement, when I first came here, there were no billing guidelines, there were nothing that happened, that your contract legal services were being managed by, throughout the city. There's no way to rope in what everything was on, so we had to rope it all in. We prepared billing guidelines, every law firm has to go for it. Every law firm that's been hired under my tenure has had to go through an RFQ process. We had to go and go through their, through all of their rates and work with them on that. We've gone to only qualified law firms to do particular work. And when we manage those individual law firms, what happens is we have the specific attorneys who are handling that type of work overseeing that work. Say, for example, if it's a personnel matter, ACA Beecham would oversee and read their bills and know what they did, because she should have been in the loop of what was going on. So I think there's an effective management tool going on there now. The question is whether or not that's sufficient value to the city, because they are capable attorneys. And so there's a very active management role that exists with respect to it. And it's different than trash haulers, because these folks have to report directly to us. In the commercial trash hauler situation, they report to their client, who's the commercial person they haul from. But I agree with you, you need to have economies of scale, and we've in fact terminated the relationships of multiple law firms that had not, that were doing things like retainer agreements with the city that were paid whether they did work or not. And we've taken action to corral all of those kinds of costs. But I agree with you, it needs to be actively managed, and I can report further on that.
Okay, I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, I would tend to support the balanced-on-demand model, too, although I would lean more towards a three attorney model than going up to four attorneys. I think that we need to make sure that we have the core in-house area covered, but at the same time be able to control the overall cost of the city attorney's office, which I think can be done effectively through proper use of outside counsel. We do have the fact that, as Councilman Curry noted, that we're a target for numerous lawsuits, and we always have to be prepared to react to those situations. But even with that, I think that if we take this balanced approach, that we'll be in a much better position to provide the best legal services and at the same time be able to control our costs.
Okay. With regard to myself, you know, I do lean toward the balanced-on-demand model as well, although I would stop shy of expressing a view of exactly how many attorneys that means. Because I think, for all of us, really, I feel sure that we need to be tested on our view of that and our view of what model we really want by a further discussion of what it really means in terms of specific recommendations, in terms of what areas to be outsourced, and how the city attorney's office would perform on a day-to-day basis under a different point of view on how to organize. And so I do think we need to go through a further thought-testing process in that respect. I'm also sensitive to the fact that we're sitting up here discussing a larger or a smaller city attorney's office, and it's a fine intellectual discussion. It's much more than an intellectual discussion to the members of your staff. And I'm sensitive of that, I know we all are. And what I would want to make sure, as I express for myself, and I've heard others up here express, this is not an issue of individual performance in your office. I would want to stress that, that this is more of an issue of overall model and approach to how we want to solve our legal resource needs. And we still have more water to flow under the bridge here than be making specific decisions. And I want to express my support for the members of your staff that are there and concern that they exercise patience to let this process go forward further before making conclusions on their side about what this all means and what they should do about it, so.
Yeah, I just have one additional
Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, I just have one additional comment. My three attorney comment wasn't meant to specify the number of attorneys, just a philosophy in terms of how I see the balanced model working, in terms of the balance between in-house and outside counsel. So it wasn't meant to specify any specific number of attorneys
Yeah.
or other staff in the office, for that matter.
Okay, good. Well, David, did you have any further thoughts? Is this enough clarification for you to move forward?
Yeah, perhaps I can summarize what I think I'm hearing right now, is I think there's a consensus of council to go for the balanced approach, which is a three to four attorney model, some leaning more toward three than four. It's going to be a question of how we make the numbers work and how we make the work work. That, if I hear the council correctly, this is not an issue of the quality of work that's come out of my attorneys or the office, but really an issue of trying to balance us correctly with our current economic situation. And I would just share with you that the attorneys of this office, I'm very proud of each one of them, I'm very proud of how hard they've worked, I'm very proud of the service they've provided to the different departments. And I think it's an issue, ultimately where we're coming from, is we have to avoid mission creep. And that can happen with an in-house city attorney office, and maybe there's savings to be had to avoid mission creep, not focused on the attorneys or their performance, but really focused on what's the most appropriate thing for the attorneys to be involved in, and how to get us to that right balance between what's the right work for us to do and what's not. And to get there, we're talking about doing more contracting out. As I foresee the next steps, as we start to flesh out what that will be, if I understand correctly, probably my next step would be is to start, begin as new projects come up, making sure we have the right special counsel resources. And if we're going to be trying to work over time to the three or four attorney model, then I need to be contracting out certain types of work that can't otherwise be handled in-house. I'll give you an example. One of our ACAs is out on medical leave, and I'll find out how long she'll be out on medical leave. We could potentially cut off then the personnel and HR to at least a short-term or temporary contracting out to another law firm to assist in that, which will free up resources internally in order to address other existing issues. Is that an approach that's acceptable to council, that as pieces come up and we evolve this paradigm, that I will be looking at opportunities to contract out and then whittling the work back as we come forward with a more refined model for you? Is that acceptable?
It is for me. I guess, in general, I would say, you know, my main thing is that I don't think we should, you should be taking precipitous action immediately based upon the conversation you heard up here. It needs to be a more studied and rational approach before we start making, you know, further decisions.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. I just would make one other comment. It's very clear that from our budget sessions and other discussions here, what we're asking the city attorney's office to do is no different than we've asked many, perhaps all of our other departments to do here in the city. And that is to reexamine how we go to market, how we do business, and see if there And that is to reexamine how we go to market, how we do business, and see if there isn't a different paradigm for achieving the same high results and standards in programs and services that our cities used to, but at a lower cost, or achieving more with the resource that we have. And so that's what we're about here, is to be making good, smart decisions in a planful and studied way as we go forward. Any further comment? All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you for your direction.
That was a very excellent report. And then I'd like to move on to public comments. This would be public comments on any non-agenda item or on the closed-session agenda. Does anyone care to make a public comment? I see a familiar face in the audience.
I'm glad that I am still familiar, and that after 18 months, my face hasn't changed that much.
What's your name again?
My name is Homer Bludow. I am a resident in Newport Beach. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and honorable staff. I am here to talk on an item that is on your regular agenda, so that I would not prolong your night, which is going to be a long one, and in particular, item number 22, special events recommendation. And first of all, I am not here to complain. I know that you have a very difficult number of decisions that you need to reach, more than $500,000 has been requested, and less than $200,000 is available. But in particular, I wanted to talk to you about a small application that was made for $4,000 for the 1-1 Marine Beach Challenge, which is one of two events. After the city council adopted the 1-1 Marines in December of 2003, now after eight years, we've settled on two events in order to raise money. And one is the Mess Night, which is held almost every year, and we're looking at sustaining the beach challenge, which was held for the first time last year in January. The application requested $4,000. So there are a couple of unique things about this application, and the first thing, that it requested only $4,000. And we did that for a purpose. We didn't want to come in with a big number, we don't want the city to carry us. But the $4,000 was based upon requesting $2,000, which was our estimate from the parking fees that would be received from about 6:00 AM until noon of the day of that event, which is a Saturday in late January, which there isn't much beach activity. And the other $2,000 was to cover the cost of the three permits that we need for the special event, the park, and also the gazebo. So that's where we got the $4,000. Each one was $2,000. It's my understanding that the recommendation from the committee is for $400. And I just wanted to remind you that basically this foundation is doing the work that was started by the city council in 2003 in adopting the 1-1 Marines. We are a foundation, so we do raise money in order to support not only the Marines, but most importantly, their families when they are on deployment, as they are right now in Afghanistan. So I hope that you would take that into consideration, that first of all, what we were requesting money for was a waiver of $2,000 in fees, and you providing us parking fees above and beyond the cost to the city, and also that this foundation is doing the work that the city started in 2003, and we do that willingly, and we would like your partnership to go forward with this particular event. I don't know if the city council has still a contingency fee fund that you can all draw from, but, you know, if you didn't see fit to fund us more than $400, maybe you could each give us $500 from your contingency fund next year to go towards this event. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the good work that you do, and so many tough decisions that face you.
Homer, thanks for your continuing work as a part of the city here, and, but I did have a question with regard to Mess Night. I don't recall the exact genesis of that. Was it one time that event, was it that it received a good bit of city resource at the start of it? I don't recollect. Has that always been self-sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, the Mess Night never received any money directly from the city, other than city council people and city staff attending. So that was never the case. We still have several city employees who are a member of our foundation. That connection, we always want to have that connection and that link, but there never was any money that went directly to the city, to the 1-1 committee at that time, in order to support the Mess Night.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, your persuasion skills are still fully intact, so I'd like to give $500 from my account.
Thank you very much. I'm going to come up there and have you sign that.
Here you go. It needs to be processed, I think, by the end of the year, but the money is available.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for your consideration. Good luck with a tough meeting tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Further public comment?
Mayor, as you know, my name is Jim Mosher. I must ask your indulgence for speaking again about something I've spoken about before, but I feel compelled to comment on regular agenda item, Roman numeral 2C, which is now your third closed-session conference with city engineer Dave Webb regarding Marina Park. Evidently, on my previous attempts, I did not make my points clearly enough. Since 1954, California's had something called the Brown Act, which in the interest of an informed and engaged electorate, very strictly limits the topics that a city council can discuss out of public view, and the procedures for doing so. In addition, this council has its own policy called Roman, called number A6, which you last reviewed and ratified in February, requiring staff to prepare the closed-session agenda in strict compliance with the Brown Act. Despite that, it was announced on February 22nd, and again on May 24th, and yet again today, that you would be meeting with Dave Webb to discuss, quote, "resolution of boundary between tidlands and uplands," end quote, at Marina Park. I don't know how to put it any more plainly, but that is neither a topic nor the language permitted by the Brown Act. The only acceptable reason for meeting behind closed doors with a property negotiator is to give him or her your instruction for the price or terms of payment you feel the city should offer for a lease, purchase, or exchange of property. And the notice must say that you will be giving instruction for price, terms of payment, or both. There are no other options, and since this notice does not choose one of the acceptable options, it is an absolute and unequivocal violation of policy A6. In addition, section 54956.8 of the Brown Act requires that before holding a closed session about a real estate issue, you highlight that item to the public in an open session such as this, by clearly identifying to the audience the property you will be discussing, your negotiator, and the person or persons with whom you will be authorizing him to negotiate, something your city attorney, for reasons I do not entirely understand, has advised you against doing, as simple as it is. All this may seem the utmost of triviality and nitpicking to many, but I would not be boring you again with this if I felt that way. Public land, particularly bayfront land, and the basis for decisions regarding it are topics of intense public interest. For the third time, I implore you to correct the notice, and if your instruct, even if your instruction is about price, to discuss this agenda item in an open session as the public interest in seeing the Marina Park issue publicly resolved would seem to require. Thank you.
Did you wish to respond, David?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Mosher's concern, and frankly, this office, myself included, takes the Brown Act very seriously, and I appreciate that his reading of it is going forward. I frankly simply disagree with him. Yes, there are limited exceptions under the Brown Act that we're entitled to utilize, and frankly, the city council is fully in compliance with those limited exceptions. When you talk about the boundary agreement, it is, in effect, an exchange of real property, which is going through. We're working with the State Lands Commission, and David Webb is our lead negotiator, which is why he's identified as such in the notice, that he's receiving your instructions as to the land exchange related to how we solve the Marina Park boundary issue, which results from an exchange of land between two different sides of the parcel, whether it's an upland portion of the parcel, which would be fully owned fee by the city, or whether it is a tidlands portion of the parcel, which would be owned only by the city in trust through the dedication, through an ordinance from, excuse me, a statute from the state of California. So we are precisely within the exception that exists with respect to the Brown Act. Perhaps I could explain it a little bit more carefully for Mr. Mosher in our next identification, but you are completely consistent with the law.
Well, I for one would like to say that, you know, this is an ongoing negotiation with state lands, and I, for one, am thankful that staff is working judiciously and in a very dedicated way to move this process forward, which in my view is what generates these ongoing closed-session items, because there is activity here that needs to be considered and guidance given. And so from my perspective, I'm very happy with these items in closed session, and it sure feels like a negotiation to me. Councilmember Rosansky?
Yeah, Dave, wouldn't this also fall under, like, potential litigation?
It could fall under potential initiation of litigation.
Because conceivably, if we can't come to an agreement, we're probably going to wind up in a lawsuit over this.
That is entirely possible.
So, I mean, isn't that another exception to the Brown Act?
Yes, it is. I prefer to use the less incendiary exception, if I can.
Let's go to the mattresses.
Right.
Okay. Any further comment on that item? Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.